... the staff, the people in the audience and people at home to December 1st, 2014 meeting of the El Dorado City Commission. This time, we will call it to order. And first on the agenda is... I think we're missing one. Here we go. First thing is the invocation. It's Pastor Steve Eisen here. Okay.
Yeah. Y'all pray with me.
Commissioner Chase, please give us an invocation.
Lord Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time we can come together to serve our city. We pray that you be with us in our leadership as we make the best decisions possible to lead our community in the right direction as a whole. We lift all this up in your Son Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Chase. Okay, at this time, we have the Pledge of Allegion. And it's our privilege to have the third grade class from Grandview here, Ms. Mitchell's class, and they're going to come forward, tell us a little bit about themselves, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Once you guys back up just a little bit towards this. There you go. Good job.
My name is Cole Rickert, and one thing I like about El Dorado is that it's in Kansas.
My name is Ian Curtis, and one thing I like about El Dorado is the parks.
My name is Brock Nichols, and what I like about El Dorado is the school and the parks.
My name is Emily Jellison, and one thing I like about El Dorado is the parks.
My name is Mackenzie Barton, and one thing I like about El Dorado is the schools.
My name's Mikel Crenshaw, and what I like most about El Dorado is that it's in Kansas and we have freedom.
My name is Avery Baker, and one thing I like about El Dorado is the hospital.
My name is Justin Naglin, and one thing I like about El Dorado is doctors.
My name is Alexis Elliott, and one thing I like about El Dorado is Grandview.
Good job.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unrivaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much. Great start to the evening. Okay, we don't have any proclamations this evening, and we don't have any personal appearances. So we're ready to go into Agenda Item Number One, which is public comments. If there's anybody here that would like to come forward and have anything to say, this is a great time to do so. Name and address.
James Powell, 323 West Carr. I know I'm not new to the city council, and sometimes I'm rather controversial when I come up and point out some things that some people don't like. But on that note, I'd like to tell this council Merry Christmas. We're going to miss you the rest of this month. It's kind of the entertainment for a lot of us, you know, with some of our shows going off the air for the season. This was our... we're looking forward to you guys. So, I'd like to say Merry Christmas to you guys. I hope you have a good holiday. That's all I got.
Thank you, Jim.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? Okay, if not, we will close the public comment session, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on any of that?
So this is the consent agenda, the minutes from the last meeting, and then the 2015 cereal malt beverage applications, just so everybody knows. Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda is presented to be approved.
Second. Got a motion in second. I had a couple of questions I wanted to throw in there real quick before we vote on it. I noticed on page one, it says Butler County Treasure, American Legion property, $30,027.30. That's our taxes, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's for 2013 and 2014 because we have the confusion with the 2013 taxes, but we went ahead and paid them.
And the stadium playground program, we pay taxes on that?
The Martin Playground, there are currently property taxes on it. We are working on our Coda application to make sure we don't have to pay those.
Okay. I guess the only question I have, some other time we might... when we pay taxes and we're talking American Legion property, I would guess I would question why that wouldn't go in, and we kind of all sharing the cost of that. I'm talking with the other people that's involved with the football stadium. Just a thought, because we're paying taxes, when we pay the tax, that money goes to them.
You're not... you're only... the stadium is exempted. This is only on...
The other property.
The other property.
Just the American Legion property.
Okay. Why did we ever get involved with the other property?
The instruction from the commission was that they told me to purchase it, which is we did the lease instead, and it was tailored and focused on being economic development, that by making that 100-acre parcel in the middle of town available for development, that it would be a positive thing for the community.
That had nothing to do with the football stadium, huh?
Uh-uh.
Okay. All right. Another one, a quick question. There was a lease purchase payment of $8,088.27 on page five. Then what was that?
Pumper truck for the fire department.
Okay.
It was the lease that you agreed on, I believe it was last year.
Okay. There's a J&R Engineering five-year AWS maintenance at the airport for $12,001.80.
That's the maintenance on the weather system that we use at the airport. It's under the grant that we have out there, and Brad said we'd be getting that money back eventually.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. I thought sometime, if we could, on our CNG, I noticed a lot of expenses in there. That would be nice to understand exactly what CNG is costing us. We talked about the benefits, but I'd be interested if we're track... hopefully, we're tracking exactly what it's costing us. I heard we might kind of keep that in mind sometime.
Okay. We'll do that.
Okay.
We had a... kind of on that note, Brad got a phone from dispatch over the weekend. A man was driving from Kansas City to Oklahoma, had read about CNG in El Dorado, and stopped and tried to get gas, and dispatch called him because his credit card wouldn't work. Well, we haven't turned on that function yet, and so Brad came down and sold him some compressed natural gas.
Okay.
So it's... and we also, either last week or the week before, actually, someone came in and... someone else. So this is two that I know of, that were not City of El Dorado. And now that we're up, we'll probably be talking to KGS that said when you're up, they thought they wanted to purchase gas from us, so...
What kind of markup do we have on that?
A good one.
Oh, okay.
We're selling it for market rates. We're not...
Right.
We're not undercutting.
We're not... I think that we're going to sell it for $1.80. I think today, it's $1.89 in Wichita. So a little bit less, but not remarkably so. Lot higher than Oklahoma.
Okay, you guys got any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five oh. Did have one quick question, too. I forgot to bring up consent agenda. When we look at the malt beverage applications, is that about the same as last year? Are we higher or lower?
They're the same. I believe we actually lost one.
Jim?
And I'm sorry, I can't think off the top of my head who it was, but we... I think we did lose one, but for the most part, they remain the same.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're ready for Agenda Item Number Three. The 2014 budget amendment, Prairie Trails Golf and Dining and Sewer Fund.
You can do that if you want me to.
Well, basically, all we're doing here is amending the Prairie Trails Fund for the purchase of the golf carts. And then the sewer utility fund went over budget, basically because of the wind turbine.
And the carts were because the commission decided to pay cash instead of financing. Yep. And then the, like Tammy said, the sewer fund was the fix on the wind turbine.
Are there any money on warranty or engineering firm that sold us that wind turbine?
We... we are getting close to... we're... there's stats involved in recovering money. They said no, and now we're taking other steps. And so I could see litigation in the future, but hopefully not.
Just a few highlights, I think I was looking at. On 2014 adopted, we transferred from general fund $243,197. So that's kind of what City at large is paying for the golf course. Is that true?
Is that... are you looking at the budget or the actual?
I think it's the adopted 2014 budget.
He's looking at the adopted budget.
Yeah, no, it's not. Remember that number?
You transferred that much from general fund?
That number varies depending on what the fund needs at the end of the year to keep it from going deep.
And I think that... we've had the audit, haven't we?
No.
No, no, for 13.
13, yes.
So are you looking at the budget, Mayor, or the last year's? I'm looking at the form that... now, this is over Thanksgiving weekend.
Are you looking at the amended budget, Mayor?
No, he's looking at the adopted.
I'm looking at the adopted 2014 budget. There was an item on there that says transfer from general fund for $243,000. And then next to it was 2014 proposed transfer from general fund, which was $393.
That is the estimated transfer that the Prairie Trails Fund will need to cover the expenses from the general fund.
But I think that the actual...
The actual varies.
Was 100, 150.
It just... it varies depending on what the expenses are at the end of the year and where we end up.
But it's not... I'd have to look at what you're looking at. But I know that, again, off of memory, last year, 2013, was, I think we ended up transferring 120, 130.
130 something.
And I think this year, we'd only planned on 100, and so I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm looking on Fund One, on the amended budget that we put into the...
He's just looking at the transfer item that is...
Yeah, I know.
Is budgeted in the general fund to go to Prairie Trails at the end of the year to cover expenses.
But I can't figure out why that number exists, because it's not that high.
No, but...
Unless we did capital.
It could be. It could...
I don't know.
No.
I can't tell you today, but...
No, it's just, as it all comes out, it's just, you take what you think your revenues are going to be, minus what you think your expenses are going to be, and we cover the rest out of the general fund. That's all that is.
But it's not that...
And it's just an estimate. It's not actual.
Let's pull the 13 actual and get it to them, and now this year, with this, it probably will, but it'll probably be a quarter million.
Yeah, this year, we'll have to move more because of the carts, but that's what you're proving tonight.
I'm saying it's going to be a full report right here, or if you look at that. I think, off the memory, that number was less. The... for some reason, the number that sticks in my head, that the commission envisioned, was 180 or less. And it's been steadily going down, and...
It's gone down every year since we took it back over.
Well, maybe it's... maybe it's next year that it's only 100, or...
Maybe, because last year, we were less last year than we were the year before, and ever since the city took it back over from Camper, our transfer has been less every year.
Right.
This is the difference between the, like, budgeted amount, which is like the maximum amount we're trying to stay below, and then the actual amount that we spend.
Right.
Correct.
But even that, that we would have budgeted to transfer what was needed, and so I got to look, Mayor, and see... because that number should, in my mind, be $100,000 or 150 or something. It ought to be the number that's in my brain, and I don't know what that is.
Yeah. The difference is 150, and that's what we're chasing for golf carts, is 150, wasn't it? So I mean, that's in the general fund transfer.
Should be. No, I don't understand it yet.
Okay.
And I mean, I'll have to look at it, but I'm happy to.
One question I had when I looked and saying we need to do this, was there... couldn't we have seen that expense coming? Or at least if we said, okay, we're going to go lease that, at least we would have had a third of that money.
What the plan was, is to do five-year arrears. Are these carts five years old or four? The old ones.
We purchased them in 2010.
Okay. So we were going to do... what we were going to do was do lease payments and arrears, and for the reason we wanted to do it, to kind of refresh everybody, it was going to be easier for us to budget, because now we'll just have... every year, we'll have an annual expense for carts, because we're always going to trade them in while they're under warranty. And so it was easier for me to budget, to know that number, and not do this. And actually, it's this, and then...
Right.
And then instead, because our revenues are basically flat. It's hard for us to accommodate that. It's easier to lease it, and... but as the discussion at the time was, we could write that check, and it didn't bounce, and so it just pulls down.
As the discussion went, then the lease would have started in June or July, and they were going to put off payments until '15, so we could put it in the '15 budget.
Right. It was in the '14 CIP and...
Right. And so we decided to pay cash for it, which means we pay cash this year.
Right.
That's why it wasn't budgeted for.
Right.
One question I had, too, because we had $100,000 in there for capital improvements.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed we got some new cart paths out there.
Mm-hmm.
Could we have put off the cart paths for a year or two? Just a thought process, and not, you know, since we spent 150, it would just... that's water under the bridge at this point.
And I think that the urgency on the cart pass was not... I mean, was about revenue. And when Jason brought the lost days report to the commission, that it spurred it forward. Now, as it was, we didn't end up doing $100,000 worth of cart pass, because the roof failed, and we got a roof mid-year, and I think that was 40. And so we did 60 of cart pass and 40 of roof, and so we didn't do... we... no, we didn't do all the cart paths we wanted to do, and that's why it's not done.
But to your point, Herb, the primary reason that we all decided to move forward with cart paths was because of the amount of time that we had rain outs, and we couldn't have any play on the golf course.
Right.
And with the pads in place, the carts stay on the pads, we can continue play on the course, and they had six or nine holes connected, and now they're starting on a couple more to increase that amount of play.
I think we have three holes left, maybe.
The only other question I have is, what is our current income out there? You know, do we ever see any month-to-date stuff? We're getting towards the end of the year. Golf fees and concessions, are we anywhere close to where we thought we would be?
I think we are not in the restaurant, because we cut back on what we did, so our revenues are off... but so are... so revenues and expenses are down. But I'll have to look. Mike, I don't know if I'm talking ahead.
Okay. I just was interested in how we're doing. We've got this playing and we're working on it.
At the last Prairie Trails Advisory Board meeting, there rounds of golf have been up this year consistently.
And we've had... and I've heard comments, I don't know how it translates into my budget numbers, but I've heard comments that we have enjoyed a lot of people coming and playing, so while rounds can reflect membership play, we've had a lot of people come and play and pay. But I don't know the answer, and I'll ask... I'll look and see, Mayor.
Any other questions you've got? Okay. Have a motion in a second.
You got to open the public hearing.
Have a public hearing.
Public hearing. Anybody who'd like to come forward and make a comment on increasing our budget for $150,000 on the golf course?
And the sewer.
And the sewer.
And the food.
Sewer.
And the sewer, I'm sorry. Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing, and...
I move to approve the amendments to the 2014 operating budget in the Prairie Trails Golf and Dining and Sewer Funds as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Get ready for Agenda Item Number Four, the 2016 salary schedule.
What you have in front of you is something that we do annually. It sets out the scales, or the grades, for your employees, all employees that are part of it, which is not city manager, city attorney, and the judge. And then it... and so you see what grade they're in, and then you see the start point, the midpoint, and the end following it, so you know how much people make here. Part of the salary schedule has annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly, and so you can see all how all that translates. This year's reflects the changes that were part of the... we did a salary survey of a bunch of cities, and this reflects that midpoint of that survey, and this was part of the 2015 budget, and so this reflects that. For one year, for this year, we did it with our budget, because that's what the code says. Doing it at that same time you adopt a budget makes it very hard to plan for, and so we want to go back to doing it in December, and that's why you're seeing it here tonight.
And it doesn't change from the 2015 salary survey, so it's the same.
Right. And then the other thing is, you probably won't see a change in this for several years either. This is something that we just should do every three years. We were six on this one, I think, when we do a survey, and so it's just something we monitor, how we relate to our peers.
Any others you got any questions? Couple that I have. When you look at the resolution, there's like three things. You got longevity, and deferred comp, and then the extra. Why are just those three put in there? Why wouldn't we put, like, capers and that kind of stuff? I mean, what makes us decide on these three things that go into this resolution?
History.
History? Okay, they just haven't done it? Okay.
Well, that's all we've ever done.
Okay.
Now, if you're asking for how much an employee's total compensation is, we know that as well.
Do we make out a form, Herb, that is on one page, that shows everything that we do for our employees?
We have given it to employees, but not for several years. We have before, in a paycheck, gave them a piece of paper that said, this is the total cost for your benefit for your job. And so we have done that. We haven't done it lately, but we have done it.
I... when I worked at Walnut Valley, Cliffy used to do that every year, and I was in awe when you really look at that.
Yes.
When they pay half your FICA and half your capers.
Yes.
The whole list that goes into that.
Yes.
The city does a lot, is what I'm saying.
And it may look like $10 an hour. The expense to the city is quite a bit more, and I have a...
Workman's Call.
I have looked lately, but we know the average, and it seemed like the average was 38, 1.38. So if you made 10, your total compensation is 1380, if memory serves me right, but I don't know what all that included. It may not have included the FICA, FICM, that kind of stuff. But we do do that, and we do track it.
Okay.
And I think you're right.
If you ever make one up, you know, if you'll write out the guy's name on there, I'd be interested to see.
Sure.
What it looks like sometime. The other thing was that on capers, isn't capers going up?
Yes, it is.
Do we know how much? How much does the city pay for capers under the new program?
Do you know that? There's... there was three tiers. Now, I think there's two going to one, or two going... I think we're all going to the new deal, aren't we?
I'm not sure.
We did... and again, I'm kind of prepared, but not really, just off the top of my head. The employee match in the past was 4%. I think this year, it went to 5, and next year, it's going to 6, and 6 has been what all employees, it started after 2011 or '09, so 2009, all new employees went to 6, and so they're pushing us up to that. And so it's all changing. Again, KPNF, it went up a ton, like, the day after we signed up for it, and we know all that. I just don't have it here tonight.
And I guess what I'm saying, as we look and we budget, we want to be fair to staff, but we want to be fair to the taxpayers. And the thing that catches my eye, and I've said this before, is that when you read this... I'm going to read this one paragraph here. "In addition to all wages and benefits that all regular full-time employees not eligible to participate, in KPNF retirement system will be eligible for additional retirement benefits as follows. Employee receive a fixed percentage contribution of .74% of their annual gross salary into the Great Western Retirement Services account until upon hire. Additional employee elections will receive an employee match. Employees will receive a 5% employer match for every 1% contribution, up to a maximum of 5% employer contribution. The deferred compensation will be deposited biweekly..." So let's... in that scenario, because I've... the capers program, they debate this in Topeka, and they said it and say, this is for public employees. So we go around, and Butler County does this, the school districts do this, and if this is going up, and we're doing 6... is going up and, and we're doing 6% and matching the employee at 6%, and then we do 5%, 5.74%, that's almost, that's 11.74% real quick, that we do for retirement. Now, I know where I work is a 3% match. I put three, they put three, and it's got a limit on that, you know, of that kind of number and I'm, in today's world, I know about the rest of you guys, that's just a heck of a deal. And, and I've seen as a taxpayer, I would rather be helping the employee in the health insurance area, they get a, you know, a bigger kick on their payroll, you know, whatever, I just don't think that, I'm not in favor of trying to go ahead and go above what capers is doing at this point. Capers are making some improvements and we're gonna have this layered on top of that.
Well, and...
Well, hang on just a second. So, I, I mean, I guess I just want to interject here. We, we've, in, in this discussion before and as we've had this discussion over the last four years that I've been here, we decided as a commission that we value all the employees at the city as much as we value our police and fire. We've provided KPNF for police and fire, which is a great retirement program. And initially we did that because we felt like, you know, police and fire go out every day, they risk themselves, risk, put their lives on the line for us, put themselves in dangerous situations. But then as we discussed it more, we also realized that police and fire wouldn't be able to make it to the calls, wouldn't be able to make it to a house that's on fire, may not have water running in the, in the, to, to, to put fires out if it weren't for the rest of the employees of the city. And so that's the reason that we added some extra to the, to capers, which by the way, capers is a struggling retirement plan. I think that anyone that, that believes that, that capers is, is the end-all solution for a good retirement plan is, is gravely mistaken. I'm a public, I mean, I work at the college, I'm in capers, but it's, it's certainly not something that I can depend on. So what we decided as, as a commission was that, that we, we valued all employees and the work that they do for the citizens of El Dorado and that this is our way of kind of bringing those levels to make everyone equal across the board in their, in their benefits package.
And so, again, to kind of rehash, the city's contribution to KPNF, and again, I'm gonna member, and it's been a long time and a lot of waters float under that bridge. The city's contribution to KPNF was, let's say, 12%. The city's contribution to capers was 7%. The commission and staff wanted it, thought that the retirement of the benefits should be equal. So that, so what Bill's saying is, without the 5%, you're saying that the retirement of your police and fire is more valuable than your water department. And the commission said, no, they're all equal, we want to contribute equally to all of our retirement systems. And so I can't answer for what the school districts do now that they have police departments and I can't answer for, and how they justify that, that you have different people getting different retirement benefits. But in El Dorado, it was about having one. And so I have an equal benefit for all employees. And so that's the solution that was, came up with and I mean, I understand it and I, and I hear you, the, I guess I don't agree that it's richer, it's the same as, and actually it's not even near what it is for police and fire anymore, because our contribution for KPNF went up and we did not match that rise with capers. I mean, it's 5%. If we did match, if we continued to use the same logic, if staff would have come back and asked the commission, I think the match would be eight or nine percent now, maybe 10. And so we haven't done that, so today there is not parity in the city's contribution for all employees. Police and fires, the amount of taxes that are levied to pay for their retirement benefit is much more than it is for other employees. And so we haven't kept up and we didn't because, I didn't ask, because I think that what we have is wonderful and, and of course, I think a lot of capers problem is that the state of Kansas chose not to fund it like they were supposed to. And the last time they got even, they issued bonds and so it's, it's not our problem. We, we send our contributions in, so we're not short, they're short. And the last time I was at a meeting, they said their target investment earnings, they wanted was 8% and they were making eight and three quarters, they said they needed more. So I don't understand, the only part of capers problems that I understand is the state of Kansas didn't make the contributions they were supposed to make for teachers. And that's about it. And I don't know if they didn't make their contributions for their employees, but cities have been making our contributions.
When I read the capers book one time, they, they showed kind of a pie, you know, where capers was part of it and, and another part of that was social security and the other part was yours, where you do your own retirement.
Sure.
So that part of it, which we're taking this Great Western money, we're doing all of that pie in, instead of the, you know, some responsibility on the person by themselves and that other than the matching part. But you know, when we do 5% and they match one, I thought it was one to one, it's five to one.
No, and I think it all gets back to discriminating against some employees.
Well, and what I would say to you is that the state of Kansas has sat down and looked at this for all municipalities, all school districts.
You haven't built up any confidence when you said that.
And when we start going and doing something outside their plan, I don't know, I don't know of anybody else around the area that's doing that.
Well, when you, when you brought up last time Suzie was here and she gave you a list of cities that did it and so, and she gave you the list of who all matched, I don't remember all that, but...
Was it a five to one match?
Yeah.
Range, she gave us the range, it was a range of matches.
And so...
And, and I think we all understand the deals. I just think if, to be fair to the employees, you do it more on the healthcare side, you do it on the wage side, and you let the capers program do what it's supposed to do, and if they want to do something on top of that for retirement, then I'm excited for them to go do that. That's, that's just my opinion, so. And I understand where you guys are.
And in my conversation with dozens of city employees, they're very happy with, with the way it is now as opposed to getting an extra $23 a paycheck. They're happy with, with the benefits package they have.
How about health insurance? Are, are we giving as good a health insurance premium as anybody in the area?
You know, I don't, I think we're all kind of close. We may be on the cheap side because we self-insure. When you add a middleman into the equation, he's got to get paid too. We don't have that here, we have, we're self-insured. And so I think historically, our rates have been toward the bottom of total cost for an individual or a family per month, but that's a reflection of the general health of our employees. I think that, I mean, you go to Augusta and they're much richer, I think an employee pays 25 a month, maybe. They, they pay a fixed amount whether you get employee or employee and family, and Augusta's the richest one that I've ever, well, maybe not the richest, some are free. Think Augusta, you have to contribute maybe $25 to their plan.
How much is...
Mike, I'm kind of confused.
Okay.
Are you saying that, let's say we got just a number of 25, $25 a month that we spend on an employee for their retirement, you'd rather spend that $25 on health insurance or pay raise?
If we thought that's what we need to do. I want to be competitive.
Okay, so in other words, you're not wanting to lower anything, you're just wanting to move the money from retirement to a, a different benefit, correct?
I want to...
Or you want to get rid of the retirement?
Well, we're always gonna have capers.
No, no.
KPNL.
Okay. Well, one of the hardest things for the American public, 80% of the people in the United States, if they are left to re, save their own retirement, will have less than $30,000 in retirement. So the smartest thing we can do for our employees is to help them out in, in a, another avenue. Because when you're 30, 65 is forever. Why put any money in? So the more we can do at the front end, the better they are. We're not gonna turn any of these guys into millionaires, billionaires, or anything else on the taxpayer. It's not gonna cost any more money, in your thinking, to put it in healthcare versus retirement. And, and I think doing an employee more justice in thinking of his future, he'll be much better off helping, because that's, statistics say, most young people fail at retirement and especially not if the college degree people. So my argument is if we're not spending any, or saving any money, if you're not wanting to take $25 out of their wages, let the retirement be what it is. You're, 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 you're just hurting them and you're not helping the taxpayer.
Okay. Two things to that, Dave. One is that the younger guy is more worried about, he isn't worried about retirement, he's worried about getting his kids in school and his cost now. And retirement is coming down the road, but sometimes some of those people need this money upfront. That's, that's my first thing. Second thing is, how much do we actually write a check to Great Western? What's our annual bill with them? Because I see 20, 25,000 a month. You know, so you add that time swell, we're talking some money here that's going into this program.
Same amount of money that you were gonna push back into wages?
Well...
If, if you're saying what I think you're saying, but I'm not for sure what you're exactly saying.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that this program should not be there because of what's in the area, from what I know. I'm saying that if you feel like you have to go...
What area, what area are you talking about?
Butler County, 490.
Oh, because Augusta doesn't have it in Andover or Leon, so we shouldn't have it?
No, the county.
Oh, just county?
Butler County.
Butler County, as in the county itself?
The county offices.
I didn't know that, I didn't know that we had to follow their lead on anything other than legal...
It's, it's governments, you're right, we don't have to follow it.
And I think... They also get paid $30,000 a year to sit on their bench, too. Should we take that up?
Well...
I think part of it, when we had the conversation too, this past spring, or what I heard when we talked, after talking to several employees too, was it did give us, while some of our pay was lower, the benefits kind of helped us from becoming a training facility for employees to get hired, trained, and then they all leave to go to the cities around us. It helped us keep good employees and hopefully prevent just the constant circulation of folks coming in and out.
It has, it has improved our ability to recruit employees, both on the, and keep them. Look, the advantage of the Great Western or this, this other program is the employee can choose to put some money in, you know, they can have a little bit of control over their own destiny. Unlike capers, the reality of it is capers, in multiple ways, is failing every day. And that's the reason that they keep doing increases at, at the state level. They added to capers last year, they're adding another 1% this year, it just keeps going up because they're trying to make up for this deficit that they've created. It's the same problem that's going on with social security. So if we have an opportunity to help the employees and, and get them a head start to front-load some retirement for them, then I think that we need to take advantage of them. And every city employee that I've talked to is happy with the benefits package that they have and...
I'll echo that and I've talked to employees that were in their twenties and I've talked to employees that were in their fifties and they all preferred this. They were grateful for this.
Well, I, I don't know of any programs around that, if you take the six, let's say you take the 4% and you add the 5.74, that's 11.74% going to retirement. Do you get that, Nick, with what you do?
I know, I know one.
I don't. I don't even get close to that, do you?
I don't work for the city of El Dorado.
No, I'm talking about employers.
We're talking about the city.
I understand. But I'm talking about if we go down the row and say, what do you get for your retirement? What do you get for yours? And I, the refinery might match that, I don't know anybody outside the refinery that do this.
I, I work for the college now and, and I get capers at the college. The first job, the first job that I've had in 17 years since being out of college that I haven't had a very good matching 401K program, because capers is horrible. But that's what the college does. So, yeah, all of the, the previous jobs that I worked in, I absolutely had a plan where with my contributions plus my employer's contributions, I could get up to 16%.
And I think for me, when, when we talked about this before, what made me okay and comfortable with all this and learning about it, was when we looked at comparisons of what other municipality folks are making around us and similar in size. I think they were making a little bit less, but we had better, better benefits, if I recall in those meetings.
And it, and it gets back to parity in my mind. You, you could take it away, but now you're telling almost everyone in this room that they're not as value as police and fire. That police and fire, because of the nature of their job, deserves a lot better retirement system. And part of the reason that KPNF never came to El Dorado was no one could get over the disparity in the benefit. And so the, with the benefit at that moment being equal, it was equal. And so, so, so that's the driver for me. And then I guess the other point I'd make is, do you think it's in, just because currently what's in vogue in a large part of the country is to not worry and plan for their employees' eventual retirement, is that in the best interest of the country? And so we, we know who's gonna take, who's gonna give a medical, we know who's gonna take care of that and that's the people that are working. And so we as a city can either be part of the problem or part of the solution. And so when you talk about the refinery, the refinery has chosen not to be part of this problem. There are other cities, and Suzie told you, called around, all the cities, I think six of the seven cities she randomly called around us, did some kind of match. And so it's, we're not an anomaly. Does 490 do it? I'll acquiesce that they don't do it. Well, that's not our fault. They didn't need to until they started their own police department, they didn't have the disparity in retirement systems. We had a, when we went to KPNF, it created a disparity. And it's, and I think that it's, it causes conflict within the organization when you say that you all get more, a lot, the city contributes a lot more to your retirement because you're police and fire. I don't, you know, I think Bill's point, there's no need to have a fire department if you don't have a water department that can supply the water. And so while important, it's not, it's not, it's not the same thing. And so...
This has been debated at the state level and probably had more lobbyists than we ever thought of. Just went through this process to set this whole program up.
And think about it, and what they're wanting to do now is they're wanting to give it, to privatize it and have employees make those kind of decisions. Holy smoke, you're gonna create, when you go to only doing investing and counting on Wall Street, not taking your money... on Wall Street, not taking your money, holy smoke, that's crazy, too. And, and I can't, capers is the one that's having problems, we're not having problems. Capers is the one who's, who can't make money when, when corporate America has had more earnings in the last two or three years than ever, and capers can't make money? Who, who's running that deal? I can't, I can't-
I mean, I, I think, I think that, to Mike's, to Mike's point, this has been debated heavily at the state, there's a ton of lobbyists involved, and whatever bureaucracy that that's created, it's not working. And, and rather than perpetuating the problem, I think that this resolution and this, this pay scale helps create a solution that provides good benefits and a good retirement option for our employees. So, I'd like to move the Resolution Number Twenty-seven forty-nine, a resolution establishing two thousand sixteen salaries and wages paid to various employees of the City of Eldorado, and allocate the various funds of said city, charges and debits for the payments of compensation and wages of all city officials and employees be adopted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I was having a little trouble with any discussion. I was having a little trouble with why we was doing this for two thousand sixteen, and why we couldn't do this in April or May, you know, as we start the budget process, or because we're making a commitment of over a year out on this deal.
Mike, our budget starts in December now.
Right.
For twenty sixteen.
For twenty sixteen.
Okay, that we start, we start formulating the budget again.
The, the department heads-
It comes out in August.
The department heads start figuring their salaries for all their employees in March. And so, we need to have the salary survey approved prior to that, so that we can put those in the budget numbers.
And every year, except two thousand fourteen, this is the meeting that you did this at. And so, um, we tried to do it with the budget, and it just put too much uncertainty into the budget process. And so, unless you, you think you're going to go up or down, I mean, we're not going to ask to change this, this ordn- this resolution for a while. So I, this is when you always have done-
Well, and we ask, we ask city staff to start the budget process now, so that we have plenty of time to prepare, and I think that this is, this is what it's going to take to make that happen.
Have we got that calendar done yet?
I do have that calendar to hand out tonight.
Okay. Now, you know, that's the salary schedule you're needing. These benefits, does that need to go in there now, for two thousand sixteen?
That's how they got to figure a budget.
Well, I'm saying you got your salary schedule, they're just worrying about wages.
Well, you were just talking about everything that it costs to employ a person, and this is part of that cost.
Okay.
So as, as, as a department head, if I would, am trying to figure out how much it costs to have employees, I need to know what all those costs are, not just the salary.
And they're going to be the ones that figure that out, Tammy?
Right.
Yes.
All the benefits and everything that goes into that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye, motion carries four to one. Okay, ready for agenda item number five, number six, sales tax-
Number five.
No, deferred fines, number five, okay. Deferred fines and two thousand fourteen miscellaneous billing write-offs.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we bring the miscellaneous billing write-offs and deferred fines to you each December for write-off. I'd like to point out, before we get started on this, that this is a accounting procedure that we follow. We don't actually write off the debt or forget it completely. We do continue to try to collect it, so all of this money will still be attempted, we will still attempt to collect all this money before we let it go completely. So, uh, that being said, the deferred fines to be removed total sixty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents, and the miscellaneous billing amount to be removed is twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Of the deferred fines being written off, nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars is for state fees, and would have been remitted to another party upon collection, therefore that portion is not a loss of revenue to the city. The miscellaneous billing write-offs can be broken down as follows: eight thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents in mowing charges, three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nine cents in refuse charges, seventy dollars in sewer tap charges, and nine hundred and ninety-seven ninety-five in other charges. Again, this is a GAAP procedure, it's for accounting purposes only, we don't forget this debt, we just have to write it off as part of our yearly accounting procedures. Any questions?
Do we put a lien on the property for those bills?
Um, the ones that we are able to, yes, we do.
That's sixty-seven thousand, is that a high number? It seemed like it's always been around thirty, that's, that seemed like a high number.
Um, we are up a little from last year, we-
What was last year, do you know, Tab?
Um, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring that with me, but, um, we are, I want to say we're up about twenty thousand in court fines, and I know we're up about seven thousand in miscellaneous billing.
Okay.
So what, how many, kind of, what, what do you think, Tab, is the percentage? You said you continue trying to collect those. As the year goes on, how much of that do you, are you guys generally able to collect?
Um, of what was written off last year, I think we've collected a little over ten thousand this year. The girls up front do their best to track down people who owe money and are trying to sign up for service or something, and so they'll get those. Again, we put it on the, uh, accounting for liens on property tax, and then we also send the state set off, and we use a third-party collection program as well.
And the biggest, prob- probably the biggest part of fines is when we write a ticket to an out-of-state student that just goes home. And so, um, those are our biggest section of uncollectible fines, because we don't know where they go. A state set off, does that get state people state income taxes?
Yes, yes. And we try to file that as quickly as we can in January each year, that way we hit it before people get their taxes filed, so we get on the list. But the problem is typically, we're not the first ones on the list and set off, so we have to wait our turn.
Ready?
Yeah.
I move to deem uncollectible the deferred fines accounts in the amount of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents for two thousand fourteen and miscellaneous billing accounts in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents owed to the City of Eldorado to remove same from the accounts receivable records of the city, and that a list delineating each account be attached to the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, well now we're ready for agenda item number six, sales tax committee appointment for two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, each year we ask you to appoint a sales tax committee, and that committee is responsible for providing recommendations to you for the allocation of excess sales tax monies. Those monies can be used for additional property tax reduction and capital improvement projects. This year, we have everyone's names, let's, uh, I might mess up some of these names, I apologize. In advance, Mr. Mayor, you appointed Lisa Jack and Sharon Waugh, Commissioner Locke, Patrick Todd, Commissioner Young, Stacy Guthrie, Commissioner Badway, Randy Wells, and Commissioner Chapin, Josh Hall, and we received the planning commission appointee today, and that'll be
Before I make, I'd like to make this motion, before I do, I want to thank everyone that has, that served on the Sales Tax Advisory Board last year, the previous years, and it looks like, um, this is going to be a pretty new board this year. Most of the members are new, which is good to see, um, more people, new people wanting to get involved, so, um, you know, kudos to, to those that have served in the past, and, and I look forward to hearing what the, the new members have to say as well. So I'd like to move to appoint Lisa Jack and Sharon Waugh, Patrick Todd, Stacy Guthrie, Randy Wells, Josh Hall, and Fred Britton to the Sales Tax Advisory Board for a one-year term set to expire December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'd like to point out one more thing, the first sales tax meeting will be January twelfth, at noon here at City Hall.
That's open to the public, too, isn't it? Or is the first one, or how's that work?
I think it's open to the public.
The first one is not, we have it in the conference room.
But it is a public meeting.
Yeah, and I think it's-
I guess people can come.
No one ever does, but-
No.
Yeah.
But it, it's mainly for the committee to be introduced to what we do and how we do it, and, and what they're-
And pick a chairman, and-
Yeah, and, and so, it's, it's a pretty simple meeting.
In case people didn't know, our city commission meetings are open to the public as well.
Yes.
Their-
We have a couple of great people to come, but-
Sales Tax Committee's public hearing will be February ninth at five thirty.
Yeah, we do have one for a public hearing.
So I'd encourage everybody in town to, you heard the names who's on the committee, and any ideas or suggestions to contact them, or come to the meetings, and the more discussion, Okay, we're ready for new business.
No, number seven.
Number seven.
Okay.
Cancellation of the-
Gotcha.
Meeting.
Cancellation of the last city commission meeting in December two thousand fourteen, and the first meeting in January two thousand fifteen. Who wants to talk about that, or? Can. Um, historically, these have been meetings that, because of their proximity to holidays, have been canceled. So, this is, this is reiterated in that, I think, so the public knows, you, if a meeting's needed, of course you'll meet, it's, these are just the two regularly scheduled. Do we need to vote on that, or just let us? You do, because you annually say that we're going to meet on the first and third of every month, and so we've already provided notice of that happening, and so to not have it, you just need to vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the last city commission meeting in December, held on Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, and the first meeting in January, on Monday, January fifth, two thousand fifteen, be canceled, and the staff is authorized to release the January checks after the finalized December appropriation ordinance is sent to the city commission for review.
You entertain a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Something comes up, we can call a special meeting, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Okay, new business, agenda item number eight. Discussion items, who'd like to start, Seaton?
I got one item. I believe it's the bank out by Walmart.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, six, nine months ago, somebody can correct me on that.
Two months.
Hmm? Okay, not the Intrust.
Community National.
Community National, thank you. We have a large hole that keeps appearing, that we said we were going to do something with, and we wanted to direct that. And I asked for that, and I think Mike's asked for it, and I think the last thing I heard, we were going to stick a rock out there. Okay, nine months have gone by, no action taken.
I think the rock has been newer than that.
Well, yeah, I understand that.
And it's, and it's, it's on the list, and it'll get done.
Okay, now, what's the legal, legal mess that we get into by sticking a foreign object up to the curb for people to run into?
Well, you're, you have left the roadway-
I understand that.
And so, you're subject to a ticket.
Okay, is that right?
Well, I think that we would craft the ornament slash obstacle in such a way-
Jim, I'm sorry, can you speak into Herb's mic? Thank you.
We would, of course, craft our solution to comport with any applicable laws.
As much as I'd love to stick a rock there and create a traffic hazard for the semi that thinks he can make the curb, curb, I'd rather see a more proactive, friendlyer way of taking care of this problem, um, that may be more, that would probably make the bank a little happier than a rock, to remind everybody that that's possible, and that's how we fix things, with a rock. So, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, if it's a three to two, or three to one, or four to one, I'll be glad to shut up and move on to the next thing.
Could we do one of those bells?
Because I think the hole looks nice.
I noticed a place in Wichita, I've been looking around, and there, they had a rock at a corner doing the same thing over there, and I'm trying to think where that was at, Dave, caught my eye the other day. You know what we did, a sixth of Maine looks better, you know, and that probably cost money to do that, but that's, that's one option to that, and I'd, I'd let Community National, Walmart kind of get in that conversation, and-
We've had it with them, I mean, that's obviously been the-
I think they want the rock.
They want, okay, Community National-
They don't want, they don't want to spend any money, but here's what I say, you know what? What is a, one or two yards of concrete, six inches deep, poured out as an apron, to eliminate the issue? What's that going to cost? Because if a horse trailer pulls in there, can they make the corner? And they're not illegal by using that drive, correct, on a pickup? Is that, is, are they illegal or legal?
They, they could make, they could make that corner with a trailer.
How about with a semi parked there, ready to make a right turn?
Well, a semi shouldn't be there.
Leaving the apartment, or leaving that parking lot?
Right.
Okay, let's just say a big, another big horse trailer. We use horse trailers. What I'm saying is, is, is I think we ought to do something that's more, uh, doesn't invite people to drive on it, but in case they can't make the corner, um, they thought they had it cleared, they're up and over it, and next thing we know, we got a horse trailer hung on top of a rock, uh, that leaves a bad taste in the mouth of somebody, especially the horse trailer guy. And I think two yards of concrete, six inches deep, done nicely, just like we've done, like QuickTrip does on every one of their aprons, that they have concrete around all their stuff. I know that, because I look across the street a lot.
I could pour concrete in there in a month, they're going to be-
Going further?
Two feet past that.
No, they always go in the same spot. The hole never gets wider, it just gets deeper.
And I will say, you know, you mentioned the bank, and the bank-
Can't get out of it.
Did like the idea of the rock out there.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I don't care, I just think that in nine months, we ought to have some kind of action.
Yeah, some, something needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, without us having to bring it up, so, I'm, I'm being mean on staff, I don't want to be mean on staff or anything like that, I'm just saying that I think we need to do what, streets, water, sewer, those things need to be highest on our priority, and when we address it, get it addressed, and move on.
Herb said we got rocks and stuff.
Well, in, around this part of the country, we should have.
We want a rock for Christmas.
But I'd rather see, I'd rather see concrete where it looks a little nicer, and, uh, we don't cause more issues than we solve. Because I think we're going to always have people from out of state come in, and they're ready to go to Walmart, and they see the exit, and they go, and they don't read signs. And we're going to have them hung up. Which they, we can give them a ticket, I guess we can make it into a money maker. But, but I'd rather, I'd rather be more, more-
Man, it can't cost much to pour concrete in that, can it?
Two yards of concrete's two hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars, with labor and everything, hell, the hole's already dug.
Dave, there's absolutely, right now, I'll tell you, if you want concrete, I would not do it until we have all the concrete poured down Atchison and Cave Springs. That's a real road, and so if you want concrete, I'm happy to build it.
I'm not even worried about getting it done in the poor weather so that we can use the excuse that it froze overnight and now it's all cracked out. I'd rather wait until it, but I'd like to at least get a plan, get a solution to the problem and get past the hole at the bank. I think we got bigger and better things to do.
I'm in New York, it's, the rock is going to give place to send it to. I think it's been, you know, concrete-
It's just these guys here, I'm just, I just noticed that it was about a foot and a half deep or a foot deep.
So, I mean, I guess to Dave's point, I mean, we do have rocks, we have access to concrete, we just need, it needs to get done. So if it's concrete accessibility or the weather right now doesn't permit concrete today, then should we fill the hole in and throw a rock out there and then get concrete out there when it warms up or when we have that availability? Because we need some sort of solution there. And I think we also, we need some sort of solution there as the weather gets worse too, because it's just going to, people are going to get stuck there, it's going to cause more and more problems as they drive through that yard. So I agree with you, Dave, I agree completely.
Well, and I'd like to see the final fix really as a concrete apron of some sort, just because it doesn't get any, it's not deeper into the thing, it's always this wide and that deep. And even if they do go another foot, at least one of their tires is going to be on the concrete and the other's not going to leave an imprint much. So that's just one of those things where you get to drive by it a lot and get to see it and see it and see it, and it finally eats on you for a while and you go, well, I thought we addressed that twice.
Right, more and more.
More and more, yeah. And I think we spent a lot of time, and I think the fix to the problem is simple, either get the damn rock out there or put some concrete, but concrete, I think, is our best solution for all. Because the bank doesn't need horse trailers hung up on a rock in front of their drive or a semi. So that's my idea, so whatever you guys want to do. It's time to make a decision.
I agree.
I kind of like what Bill said, throw dirt in it, put a rock out there right now and then do your deal when the weather gets right.
I like that too.
Yeah, I agree with you, the final solution, get an apron, put it in there and be done with it. But I think in the meantime, my big concern is as the weather gets worse, it's just going to tear that up even worse. And it gets deeper, because it's been a lot deeper than this before, you and I both know that, so. So I think a solution right now, get the rock in place, get it out there, help block that off, and then the final solution would be the concrete apron.
Okay, thank you.
You good with that?
Oh, I'm happy, I just, one of those things that-
I just like you being happy.
I got freaking told about it and I finally got tired of hearing about it and got tired of looking at it, and so by God, I'm using my authority.
No, not that.
Sorry.
You done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Well, since we're not going to be here on the 15th, Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year, everybody, and remember the reason for the season. That's all I got.
I just have a couple of quick things. Comprehensive plan meeting you're going to set up, Herb, after the first year we talked about, to discuss the comprehensive plan, sidewalk plan that's in there and all that.
I think it's the second Saturday in February, if I remember right.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to confirm that we were moving forward on that. Also, we're in the middle of this recreation master plan. The consulting company set up a website, it's www.konect2025.com. You can go straight to the website, you can access it from our LDOCs, the city's webpage. I would encourage everybody to go out and sign up for the website, the first meeting's coming up in January, first part of January, where there'll be a presentation, we can talk a little bit about the master plan, but there's surveys out there, there's great information, so if you get a chance, go to connect2025.com. Two other quick things. Oh, so we had Linda here talking about economic development at the last meeting, or El Dorado Inc. And, you know, even today, as I was reading through the minutes again, it kind of struck me. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. So we talked about the internet connectivity out in the industrial park and that there is none, which would tell me, or a little, which would tell me that it would be difficult to add another level of difficulty in bringing businesses in when you say, hey, move your business here, but you can't get on the internet. So I guess my question to you is, can we look at some alternatives for connectivity out there? Because I know that Cox and AT&amp;T are pretty expensive. Daniel Friesen is the mayor of Bueller. He runs a company called Ideatech, they're a fiber provider for rural communities, and their fiber runs right along the turnpike out there as well. Would you guys be all right with Herb getting ahold of this guy, just seeing if there's something that they can offer to help us kind of maybe stem off that and get connectivity out there? I just think it makes the land more marketable, you know, if we're treating it like it's a business that wants to operate in 2015.
I think that's a really good idea.
So.
We've got something to talk to him.
Right.
We've talked to him before, but those discussions were before they had their fiber on the turnpike, they were planning it but hadn't built it, and we were talking about as another option for the whole community. His company put fiber to every house in Bueller, and their, his company's a lot less expensive than Cox and AT&amp;T and other normal, big companies. So I'm happy to contact him if that's what the commission wants. Because, Bill, to your point, they're on the turnpike, and both of those, the Business Park, Industrial Park, adjoin them, so I can't imagine it's a lot of fiber.
Well, I just feel like if we're trying to recruit a business and we say, hey, move your factory here, we're going to help you with the land, but you're going to have to pay a half million dollars to run a piece of fiber so that you can send an email, I think it makes it difficult for them to do business. So I just, I want us to start looking at some alternatives and try and really find a solution to the problem, rather than just saying there's a problem, we don't know what to do with it. Which I'm not saying that that's what you do, but we need to find solutions. The other thing, as I was looking on our El Dorado, the new website, which has a lot of good information, I encourage everyone to go out there and check it out, there is a commission webpage, and we discussed before about making some individual webpages for the commissioners and the mayor, and I wanted to find out if you guys would be interested in them doing that. We had this discussion on 360, but it was really cumbersome, this is a little bit easier, I think, to manage on the new website, but each commissioner would have their own, you know, page. It'd give us an opportunity to have our information out there so that people could contact us, but it would also give us an opportunity to put updates on our own pages and really provide a good avenue of open communication with the public, and I just, if, other than Nick, I mean, everyone else that can use technology, I didn't know, there was some interest from everyone else in just having the city go and set those up for us?
I think that'd be awesome.
Well, we can talk to Cindy about it, too.
We could have Cindy do it, there you go.
She won't put up there what I tell her to.
That's probably for the best, Nick. Is that, would that be all right with you guys if they move forward with that?
I'd like that.
There's no cost to it. So it's just, it's just part of the setup.
Yeah, I'm just counting the minutes.
Maybe you could learn something.
And heck, I'm kind of with you, because I got a telephone at home and I like people calling. You know, and in the phone book, have a conversation about it, so I, but I, it's a matter of having time to do that. There's so much, there's only 24 hours in a day, too.
Yeah.
But that's important, I hear you, Bill, it don't cost anything, so.
Sure. Well, and I get a lot of calls, I mean, I spend a lot of time on the phone with constituents as well and citizens, but it's just another avenue. And if we can use it, great, and if not, it'll have a page with your bio on it and it's done.
Information, yeah.
Information, so.
Yeah.
I just think it's a good opportunity to communicate with the public.
Since we got the system, why not use it?
That's a fact, Jack. I think I am, hey, and Merry Christmas to everybody, I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Stay safe through the Christmas season and enjoy, enjoy the time with family.
Real quickly, I just want to remind people of two events. This Thursday, Main Street will be having their annual Christmas parade. It's Thursday night, it's going to be happening from 4:00 until 6:30, there'll be a soup, chili cook-off. They did this last fall, I believe, and moved it to kind of partner up with this event. So that'll be happening from 4:00 to 6:30 with a lot of participating businesses, I think, downtown. But then at 6:00 PM, the parade will go through, and I believe it's superhero themed for people that have little ones, that could be cool. And there will be live reindeer, I'm told. So that could be cute and interesting, or it could be a disaster and hilarious. And then also, Bill reminded me, and then I just wanted to add a few things to it, we're going to be doing the annual toy-a-thon on December 10th out at Walmart. This is something we've done for years, and I think the need is pretty significant this year. There's about 356 families that have registered as of last Saturday with our Salvation Army who need assistance during the holiday. Of course, a big thing with this are the toys and making sure that all the kids in our area get some kind of Christmas. But there's also, I think, I have number breakdowns, but there's over 300 kids that are registered that need a coat still. And so if you can help in any way, if you have, work at a business or you're a business owner and you want to take on a little piece of any of this, you could feel free to call me, email me, or go ahead and contact Salvation Army and we'll kind of coordinate specific numbers with you. I know there's a few coat drives happening right now, and those will come in and go towards this, but specifically like the toddler sizes, the 2T to 5T, there's about 60, 70 kids that still need coats in that age range alone. And so if you can do anything to help, that is a very worthwhile event, and of course the Salvation Army does a great job at doing that distribution and handling that pretty professionally. And a shout out to the El Dorado High School kids that last week packaged meals that will go home with all of those families for over Christmas break. So anyone that needs some food assistance will have some extra help while the kids are at home through the holiday. But again, that's December 10th, and we're going to be out there from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and you can come by anytime and just drop off a toy. They are accepting cash donations, the Salvation Army will be there to accept those, and then they will take food as well, but the big thing is coats and toys. And of course, we've got the breakdowns for everything, but teenagers, you know, tend to be the ones that get overlooked, so sometimes people ask what they can do. You can do a gift card or something, but the teenagers tend to be the ones that we scrounge up stuff for in the end, so. Anyways, if you want to specifically find out a way you can help, you can email me or call me, or again, just contact them down, Salvation Army will get you set up.
And also, if you get a chance to come out there on the 10th, the El Dorado High School, they'll be performing throughout the day, so you'll have the bands.
All USD 490.
Or all of 490, they'll be performing.
Sue does a great job every year at scheduling the kids from elementary schools all the way up to the high school to come out, and it's usually just us and them, but that's all right, it's usually the coldest day of the year, it seems like.
It wasn't last year.
Yeah. And I mean, Kathy Carrier, Brad Streeter, and I will broadcast that day on 100.5 The Wolf, and so I guess you could kind of listen to that station to get updates throughout the day, is the plan.
It's a great opportunity. There's a lot of these opportunities throughout the holiday season, I think, that we all need to take advantage of to find ways to give back to the community, and this is a great one. They're going to impact a lot of people with this, so. Chase and I have talked a little bit about it, I really, we really encourage people to get out and support, this is going to impact families in El Dorado and around El Dorado, so.
And if anyone's ever, I mean, I could go on about this one, but I'll stop here. The Salvation Army does an incredible distribution with everything, and it's a bit overwhelming to see all these families or these parents, for the most part, come in to get what they need for the kids before the holidays. And some people, you know, we've touched on a few issues where people debate back and forth what kind of need there really is in our community, and there's a significant need. I mean, the fact that there's over 300 kids that are registered to get a coat, I think, is something that is an issue. And anyways, Jeremiah, who's the store manager at Walmart, does a great job every year at getting as many things on sale and clearance as he can for this event. So even if you just go out the day of and purchase something, there'll be coats out, there'll be toys, and you could just go in and grab something and drop it off that day.
And I may add, and the thing that I find really sad is a lot of these kids are asking for underwear, are asking for socks, and so getting a present is out of the scope of their want, because their need is at so much more base level. I mean, when you have a kid asking for underwear for Christmas, that's sad. Anyhow.
That's all.
That's all. Couple of things. Scott went to Butler County, had a land sale for back taxes, and we bought some stuff. Can we have a little report on that? I know we had two properties that were bought, 918 Orient and 218 West Locust. How much did we pay for those, Scott?
The Locust property, we purchased for $50.
Okay.
The property on Orient was purchased for $1,500, and then the remaining parcels that were still owned by Trace Amigos and the Greiler addition were also purchased by the city of El Dorado for $50 a lot.
The buildable lots, right?
The, everything that had been delinquent taxes since 2007.
Okay. On the two houses we bought, what's our plans with that? What are we doing with them once we buy them? And how many do we own right now?
I wish I would draw a list.
And you can do that next time if you want to.
Really, what we're keying after is, well, first off, with these tax sales, I want to say, the reason we go to these tax sales, and really, this is the first time we've gone and actively looked at properties, is to get rid of the ones that need to be gotten rid of and not picked up by some other individual that in turn rents it out for, you know, an absurd dollar amount per month for basically an unlivable habitat. These lots that we have picked up serve a better purpose. The one on Locust could be a buildable lot for a new home and infill, which we've worked hard on, discussed at quite a length. The one on Orient works well into the concept of that floodplain remediation, along with lines of integrating parks, North Main Park, Rio Park, potentially. The property on Orient was basically a hazard to safety of people living around it.
Is that a pretty good sized lot? 1,500, is that in the floodplain?
It is, yes. But I would say, first and foremost, first and foremost is, we do that, looking after the public safety and getting rid of some of these structures that are easily accessible at Sheriff's Sale that can have a better use.
Because I, my comment is that, you know, we're taking them off the tax roll, which isn't anything anyway, because that's why they're there. As long as we have a plan, I guess, to get it back on the tax roll. So, you know, if we go to Locust and we tear the house down and it's a lot, are we going to put it up for sale then at that point?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I mean, I think we have two lots right now that we're ready to sell.
And we have-
And a couple more, a couple, three more that'll be on for sale.
And we have some that need to be torn down-
Yeah, right.
-as well. As well. But, yeah, I mean, for someone to come to us with a plan, say, hey, I want to redevelop this property, here's my plan, here's what I want to do. And when we get, when we get a number of these put together advertised for proposals in the community, submit, submit plans, what you're looking to do, you know, some resumes and some probably people that we can contact or if we're not aware of who they are.
And I think a clawback on them, too. Just like, if you buy a lot from us in the industrial park or the business park, we give you a year or something to build. And if you don't build, if we want to buy it back, we can, so that, and so it prevents spec on the lot. Our interest on the lot is to have a new house. Our first interest is to get rid of the junk. And then our goal is to have a new house that helps improve the neighborhood. And the only, with the exception being the floodplain.
So if we developed addresses or a map that shows what properties we own?
We have.
And then also the program we just passed here not too long ago?
We have.
You know, try to promote that a little bit.
We have that map, I don't know if we've updated lately, but we have.
It's updated monthly, I mean.
We give, and we've actually give it to the commission kind of frequently, because this is kind of a normal question. The commission asks routinely about what we own. And so we, we built that map, and I guess I didn't realize we keep it up to date.
Well, yeah, the county supplies ownership data, so we get those files monthly from the counties, so it can be updated quite easily.
On those Greiler lots, how much did you say we bought those for?
Fifty dollars a lot.
Fifty dollars a lot, okay.
And they're buildable?
Thirteen of them have road and sewer currently, and could be buildable.
How much did the city, how much did we have in the infrastructure? Have you ever seen the number, Scott, that we've actually lost on that deal?
Yeah, I mean, that could be compiled, and it had been in the past when we reviewed that. But, yeah, nothing that hasn't been sold or built, you know, that doesn't have a home on it now, has not paid for any of the improvements for Third Avenue, has not paid for any of the improvements in front of their home, has not paid for any of the sanitary sewer that serves those lots.
Sixth Street.
Nor has it paid for Sixth.
And, and I think if I remember, and again, I'm remembering the discussion one year ago, I want to say we calculated it was forty-four thousand sticks in my head, but it could be wrong. But it seemed to me like it was forty-four thousand dollars that was out there. But maybe that's, maybe that's, does that seem high, or does that seem?
I, I would say probably in looking at most of those lots owed on average between three to five thousand dollars in special assessments. Outstanding that hadn't been paid, not counting what their future payments will be.
Yeah. So I may have just been thinking about our piece.
I think you was. I've done that one time, it was a bigger number than that, I thought.
Well, that wouldn't surprise me if, if that, if everyone's pot does make it bigger. I think, I think I was just thinking about.
City.
City and maybe specials.
And I, and if I recall, I think I did do a presentation to y'all about those numbers.
Yeah. And then I think, but I am pulling all those records and looking at them again.
Okay. One other thing I want to bring up, the Sunday, and I can't tell you which Sunday it was, I was out for a walk and it was cold, and I seen three or four city trucks. So I thought, well, I'll go down there and see what they're doing. And we had a water leak. And I wanted to tell the people of El Dorado how happy and impressed I was with city employees that day. Because I don't know if they can put this on TV, but I got a couple of pictures I want to show you while we're talking here. I went home, got the iPad and took a couple of pictures, and I, one of the things that crossed my mind, thinking about that over the weekend, was trees in the sewer and waterline path. That concerns me as we go forward. Now, this guy's in his hole at two o'clock on Sunday afternoon, working on this, and that ball you see up on the upper left-hand corner is the tree. So he might go to the next picture. So you can kind of see what that was going into. The reason I took this picture was, if you look down the street, you'll notice those, that waterline probably runs right down that street, and I always thought that there was some kind of policy that you didn't plant trees between the sidewalk and the street. And I noticed in the newer part of town, you don't see that as much, but in the old part of town, you see a lot of that. So I'm, I'm just thinking that that waterline, if it runs there, it's going to be under those trees and be a problem someday, so.
And I think that the, it's not normally a problem. And I think in the new part of town, there isn't any sidewalks, so you don't have that.
Issue.
Issue.
But your sidewalks are marked up in your driveways to know where that would be.
And I think the, the, in fact, the city's practice is, if someone wants a tree in the right of way in front of their home, we come and plant it for them, give it to them and plant it for them. And so it's different. Now, the, I guess, the thing that, that, there, we have a brochure that we give out, and it's, it tells you what trees are good to plant next to the street. And so we give that away and have that brochure, so, so we do that frequently. I think as a, it's hard to generalize that that's where the utilities are, because often the utilities are actually under the street, and that, that really doesn't make any sense to me. But when you're a hundred and fifty-year-old city, that's not terribly uncommon, no, it's common. And so, and then if you go back far enough, then you used to put utilities in the alleys, again, so they're not in the street. And so there's a variety of locations, and I think as a, most of the time, it's no big deal, and, and so I don't, I don't think it's a big deal.
See, and I, my thought was that when you look at that last picture, that tree ought to come out, in my opinion. Because as you put dirt back into there, and you've already got the waterline, it's got a sleeve on it that had a hole in it, you know, I would think the root system would be kind of developing back around where the, where the waterline was. And I, I always wondered why we couldn't have some kind of, you know, when you go out to dig in your yard today, you have utility companies have you dig, or whatever the name of that is, it comes out and marks. And I would think if somebody's getting ready to plant some trees, if you come out marked where the sewer and the waterlines are, and tried to stay away from them.
They're supposed to.
That, that.
It's a state law.
Okay, that they stay away from them?
No, that you call dick sake.
Okay, but you dig, doesn't mark for trees, or for waterlines and sewerlines.
And again, most utilities, most utilities should be below where the roots ever go. Walnut is an exception, walnut has a taproot. But I'm sure most of you have seen when trees fall over, it's surprising how shallow those roots are. Those roots are only eighteen inches, two feet. Most trees don't have, have, have some breadth, but not very deep. And so, and we want utilities below freezing. I think in El Dorado, waterline's got to be two, three feet.
Yeah, thirty-six inches.
So now, so now your utilities are gone, are underneath the tree, and most times it's not a problem. This is an anomaly. But, and the thing with that tree, I don't, it, it may die, I don't know that it's going to die.
Well, and let's say that it doesn't die, it's going to grow right back towards that waterline.
Well, if it were a sewer line, that might be true. And, and of course, the first thing I saw when I saw this picture, or thought of, is that's not a very good place for a tree, but as I reflected on it more and talked to my water distribution sewer maintenance superintendent, it's rare for us to have a water leak because of a tree. Not, not rare for a sewer problem. And the reason for that is waterlines are pressurized, and typically, if you have a leak on a waterline, it comes to the surface and, and you're going to find it. Waterlines don't typically provide any moisture for trees, and so the tree's not seeking water and doesn't grow around that, it just, it's like a rock in the ground to it, I mean, it doesn't know any. So we don't, this doesn't happen very often that a tree will cause a problem. It does cause some difficulty in getting it fixed if it happens to, to leak, you know, right under the tree. But again, it, it's, it's a very infrequent event. Again, these, these trees, this is an old tree, maybe fifty, sixty years old. Typically, the trees that I see planted in that fifteen-foot easement from the curb back, these days are, they're Bradford's, they're crab apples, they're ornamentals that really aren't going to impact that waterline, they do provide great shade, the aesthetic value of it, and so it's really not problematic for us. It maybe makes things difficult when you have a leak, but again, this is pretty infrequent. Now, if we were talking sewer lines, I'd, I'd change my tune. Sewer lines, they do cause a lot of problems.
But not anymore. Sewer lines that were made out of clay.
Right, clay, clay tile sewer lines.
I mean, today.
Maybe sea sewer lines, not so much.
Because they don't leak.
Yeah, and if they've been in such a form, they don't leak either, so. But that old, the old clay tile sewer lines, but, you know, those are, those are in back alleys, those, those are in places where trees are anyway, so.
I just thought, like, when you look at that tree and the ball and how they had to cut, that took some time and effort on the city's part with that kind of deal. That tree, in my opinion, should just come out and start over, and, you know, I'm not saying you plant another tree in that spot, I'm thinking that I would like to see if you're going to plant a tree, you plant it up between the sidewalk and the house.
Yeah, and that's.
Or get away from the waterline, so we don't have that problem in the future.
And people just need to understand, if you, if you plant trees or shrubs or even a mail, a brick mailbox, if it's in the utility easement, it's at risk.
Yeah.
It's at risk, and it may come out if we have to, I mean, we're going to try not to kill the tree, but.
But I'll, I'll tell you that, that if you look in this picture, across the street, oh, this, there is a canopy in this block of random. And the last time we went to trim them, so that trucks, trash trucks primarily, could get underneath them, there was almost a riot. And so I, I think you go to West Central. West Central's shape, in part today, is the shape it is east of Summit because of some trees. So while I think you, you, what you're talking about is, in some way, maybe commonsensy, there's passion for trees, and you, you may not survive that. If we sent you down with a chainsaw, you may not survive that, that job.
And I guess I'm saying that we don't go take the chainsaw, I'm saying that when we have an issue like this come up, and it's done that.
Oh.
If that tree comes out.
And that's normal.
Okay.
If we kill it, we take it out.
Right, and if a new tree's planted somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, well, all we can do is be proactive going forward with things, and.
And, and that's normal. If we kill a tree, we take it out. And, and it's not, and I think that if it dies on its own, we will split that expense with property owners. If we kill it, we take it out and, and bear all the expense. And so that's our norm.
What happens if we do enough root damage on that one, Herb? Which did quite a bit when you look at that picture? And we get a big wind comes up and blows on somebody's house?
We're, we're watching this one.
Well, I mean, that's, watch it fall on the house? I mean, that's what could happen in a storm possibly.
Could.
And then we'd be liable for that, wouldn't we?
It's a live tree today. Trees, trees fall down every day.
Yeah.
And I, and so, I mean, I guess.
That's just my point on that.
No, our, our tree people think it'll be fine, but I'm, I'm with you, I understand. It may not be. And if we see any movement, and everybody's alerted to it, if we see any movement, we, we've told the property owner, if they see any movement, call us and we'll come out.
Yeah.
But it doesn't appear that it's going to die. I mean, it's just like people, you can take out one lung and still survive.
And it's probably only lost a quarter of its roots on this side, so it's, I, I would agree with that, that it's probably fine.
And it's dormant, because it's fall, and so, I mean, you could, if someone had a desire, they could go in with a tree spade, dig that tree up right now and move it, if you had enough money.
I want to point out a tree that, to me, has a lot of value. At the water treatment plant, there's a huge oak that's just kind of southeast of the water treatment plant, right on the, it's on the east edge of the Clearwell. And when we did our plant expansion in ninety-eight, we took half of that tree's roots out in order to make the connection, new connection of that Clearwell. And, and we were really worried, because that, I mean, that's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-year-old oak, probably, huge tree. And, and it, we packed the dirt back in and covered it up and watched it, and it's alive and well, that was back in ninety-eight, so. But it lost at least half of the root ball on one side. I mean, they just, and I was really worried that we were going to have to take it out, worried it was going to fall down, but it survived. But it has a lot of value. The aesthetic value, I think, is, is really prevalent in the community.
And this one was on my mind, I'm thinking the whole town in the going future. You know, what, what's laying out in the ground, what's fifty-six years old, what trees are on top of them?
Well, I think that's.
Being proactive with the policies.
No, and with, and I think we think about right tree, right place, we do it all the time.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's the only thing I had, I wanted to, we just had Thanksgiving, and I wanted to make a comment that the City of El Dorado has a lot of things to be thankful for. And a lot of times, we look at the challenges we have, but also, there's some good positive things. So it's a great place to live, and I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and remember the reason for the season, and that's all I have. Herb?
Okay, I just had a few things. Like Tammy said earlier, she did bring the budget calendar, so we're going to pass that out. Y'all can look at it and digest it, and, you know.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I went to KU this last year and was involved in the CPM class, which is Certified Public Managers Course, graduated the twenty-first of November? Yes, yay. And this is my capstone project to improve the budget process. So the first step of it is to give you a calendar for the entire year of the budget, and it starts tonight, on December first. And Julie also came over last week, and she did a little article on the budget process and put it in the paper this last Saturday.
Good job, Julie.
I'm pumped.
And again, take a look at it, digest it, if you see something you want to change or needs improving, let us know, we're happy to accommodate you all.
It will also be sent to you on the Dropbox or whatever you call it.
And I'm going to include it.
It'll be on our Dropbox?
It's going to be in Dropbox, and I'm going to include it in my manager's report, so you'll have a lot of different places to get it.
I'll lose this one.
That is nice to have.
The next thing I wanted to talk just briefly about is I get a weekly bond buyer's information about the price of debt, and we've talked about that, and I wanted to show you the latest one, and I have it on the screen, or it's ready to show. And we've talked about, I can't, I can't, you know, debt can't get a whole lot cheaper because zero's cheap. If you will, and tab, if you'll tab down too, maybe. You can see what's gone on in bonds in the last twenty years, and they've perpetually gone down until the recession hit, they went up a little bit. And even this little snapshot of the last two years, we're still. And even this little snapshot of the last two years, um, we're still, we went up in thirteen, I think in the, the speculation the Fed was gonna change rates. And, um, and it's been dropping again ever since. So we still are trending down. Um, I don't, for several years in a row, the, the Fed has said they're gonna start easing back on interest rates. They're gonna raise them. Um, they have taken the first few steps in changing monetary policy that would say this shouldn't be going on. They have quit buying, um, they've quit buying a lot of stuff. And so, uh, they, it ought to go up. I guess I will be surprised if they really follow through if the economy's not doing really well. And, um, the last quarter, they've been revising and we have been looking really strong that our growth in the country may be almost four percent annualized, which I don't think we've seen in a long time. But, so I just wanted to tell you, it's still low. Bond rates are still low. And we, of course, borrow for quite a bit lower than this average. But anyhow, wanted to point that out. And then, um, the last thing I had, um, I believe there's a cookie sale coming up that someone else should have mentioned.
Oh.
And I'm trying to save him from getting in trouble with his wife, that you can give the specifics to if you want.
Saint Nicholas Cookie Fair at Trinity Episcopal Church this Saturday. Uh, I think it starts at eight, I think. Is that not right?
I, I just know, we usually get to hear about it. I saw it in the paper.
Do they have free samples?
Well, I was getting, well, no, I wouldn't say it next meeting, cause it'd been over.
Actually, I got a text that you didn't say it. Cookie fair Saturday morning until one. You're welcome.
Thank God for technology, right?
And other people. I don't know if you're familiar with it.
And that's all I had, Mayor.
Herb, I had.
Thank you, Herb.
Sorry, we have one more thing.
Okay.
Um, election packets will be available in my office this week. And, um, they can't be turned in to the county until after the first of the year, but we do have an election coming up and those will be due, I think it's the third week in January, but I'll get all that information when I get the packets, hopefully tomorrow.
With that, are you, I know a league, I think, maybe it was you, someone spoke about kind of doing a little education with the public about our structure of government and commitments and, and all that going into the election year. Is that something we might still?
Sure.
Plan on doing?
How about just put it on agenda and kind of talk about it?
Yeah.
In January?
For people that are curious.
One meeting to do, yeah.
There you go. I don't want to scare everybody off.
Well, second meeting will be after.
Talk about the pay.
Yeah, don't mention that one.
I'll talk about public service.
For those of you who don't know, we have two commission spots and the mayor's spot will be up for election.
Which is, every two years, we elect three people. Um, commissioners are four-year terms and the mayor's a annual term, a biannual term. And so there's always, every election cycle, so every two years, three of the board, um, are up for reelection. And that's all I have. And I think that someone told me several weeks ago, asked me if we were gonna have a executive session. I have lost my recollection of who or why, and so unless one of y'all can remember it, I don't need one, Mayor.
Okay. What did you say for legal?
I put it, cause that's such a good cover. It covers a, a, a ton of ill and just to have it on the agenda. And, um, and, and I don't, I, that's, that was just a coverall and because it's irregularly scheduled, you can change it. But I can't, I can't think of who wanted it or why.
Wasn't me. Wasn't me.
And I think it was, seemed like it was one of y'all.
Is it, well, it wasn't me. But is there any updates, you know, on any issues? You know, like, uh, American Legion, water district, you know, any of those kind of things sticking out there?
Nothing that's actionable and I'll just, I'll do an update in my manager's report if you want.
Okay. Have we been in discussions with any of those people recently?
Mm-hmm. Well, we have, we have got a letter from District Three.
Yeah, okay.
We have called the Legion, I don't know if we've talked to them yet. Left messages. I think that today they should be happy if they looked at our appropriations ordinance.
The thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So no need for an executive then?
No, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioners?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, guys. To all a good night. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries by zero. Thank you and good night.